Okay, good evening everyone and welcome to the April 7th, 2025 regular meeting of the Township of Montclair Planning Board. In accordance with the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by posting a copy of the notice on the first floor of the municipal building and by sending a copy to the newspaper designated by the township for notices. This meeting is being broadcast live on Channel 34 and is streaming live and will be available on demand on YouTube. This meeting is a quasi judicial proceeding, meaning that the board has powers and procedures resembling a court of law, and we are obligated to objectively determine facts and draw conclusions from them in order to provide the basis of an official action. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues of what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and the decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Fire exits are to my right, which is your left, and the back of the room where you entered. And first up is roll call.
Present?
Here.
Present?
Here.
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 I'm here.
Next up, we have the minutes from the meeting of March 17th.
I didn't have my microphone on. I received several amendments, changes to the minutes. Are there any additional changes? Is there a motion to approve as amended?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Oh, sorry. Can I ask who else sent? I got Keith's and I got mine. Did someone else send changes to the minutes?
I thought yours.
Yeah, yeah, I know, but does anybody else change the minutes? Because I don't recall seeing anybody except Keith.
It was you and me.
Okay, that's all. Thank you.
You two were the tag team match.
Yeah.
No.
We handle it.
We try to catch each other out, I think.
Exactly, exactly. And next up, we have resolution for 182 Glen Ridge Ave, Eminem Tylic.
I couldn't.
Do you have the microphone on?
No, no.
Perfect.
There you go. Mr. Tremblak and I couldn't quite get that together quick enough, and rather than give it to the board today, I figured, and he more or less agreed that we could table it until the next meeting. It'll be done by then.
Okay. And then we also have 154 Pine Street, an administrative amendment to a resolution.
Yes, we received our request from Andrew Marshall, the owner of Genuine Grow, to amend, well, to, well, I guess we have to figure out exactly what needs to be done. He wants to apply for a license from this township to be a cannabis manufacturer. He has a license to cultivate it, but he wants to expand that. Part of the, one of the requirements is to get a conditional use permit from the planning board, and he did get a conditional use permit to operate a cannabis establishment, I believe it's called, at his site. And what we want to do is clarify that this conditional use permit would also apply to a cannabis manufacturing, which in our zoning code, they both fall under cannabis establishment. Is that correct?
They do. And the state, state law, they're not exactly the same, and they're treated differently. But for the purpose of getting, of qualifying under the conditional use permit, the local conditional use permit, there's really not going to be any major, not going to be any change of use, really. They're not expanding the location, they're not doing anything that's going to call out site plan, they're not, they're going to just be operating with an additional feature under their local license. So, yes, Mayor?
So, I asked earlier before the meeting started, but I just want to clarify, we are talking about the same individual, the same business, now he just wants to extend and do manufacturing as well. So he will have two licenses.
Right. And he's here tonight if you have any questions.
Yes, no, I, we met him earlier, but I just wanted to make sure that that was the case.
And I believe that the council amended the cannabis ordinance last year to allow for two manufacturers. So that's what predicated what's happening tonight.
And so after tonight, would there still be another one manufacturer, or that they would both be now assigned to someone if, I mean, the recommendation here would go forward?
Right. They still have, he would still have to get the license from the council.
Yes.
But what would happen tonight is this would be, simply the planning, the request is to have the planning board administratively approve this manufacturing under the existing resolution, right? So if he's successful, he would get the second manufacturing license, because the other one was already approved for the, another space within the same building.
Short of that, the applicant would have to come back and put on the exact same application as they did when they got the first conditional use permit.
Okay.
And it just didn't seem like it made a lot of sense to ask the applicant to come back and redo it, just for the sake of having an additional manufacturing, having manufacturing as well as cultivation on the site.
Thank you. Is that set by the state, the number of manufacturing license that we have?
That's the local code.
So the council, if ever, could add more if they wanted to have more?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
So is it, is the intent just to amend the resolution that was passed the first go-round?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
So we have a resolution that was passed when he became a cannabis?
That's correct.
So you're just going to amend that?
And I think that's probably the easiest way to go, is to amend it, to do that.
Could there be some clarification of the difference between the growing and the manufacturing?
In our code, they both fall under cannabis establishment, and both of them are permitted in the zone. That's...
Yes, but could you tell me the difference between the growing and the manufacturing?
I could.
Go ahead.
So you grow the plant, and then you take the buds and you package them up, and that's the manufacturing, because I understand from reading what the letter said. Correct?
Carmel, you sound like someone with experience.
That's pretty much correct.
Does that answer your question, Ms. Willis, or would you like Mr. Marshall?
It is a subtle difference, basically.
Right. I mean, we can have Mr. Marshall come up if you'd like.
That would be fine, that would be good.
Okay, Mr. Marshall, come on up.
Mr. Marshall, I think it would be appropriate to, for you to be sworn.
And you'll have to turn on the mic, too, when you, thank you.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Would you please state your full name and business affiliation for the record?
Andrew Marshall, the owner and CEO of Genuine Grow LLC, which is a business address of 154 Pine Street, Suite 103, Montclair, New Jersey.
You have to speak up a little bit more.
You have to speak up a little bit more, sorry. Just so we get it on the recording.
Andrew Marshall, founder and CEO of Genuine Grow LLC, business address 154 Pine Street, Montclair, New Jersey.
And did you hear Ms. Willis's question?
Yes. So the difference is, we grow the plant under the cultivation license, and with the manufacturing license, we'd be able to break down the buds and turn them into pre-rolled joints and other associated products. Without that license, we have to outsource that work to another third-party license, and that other license could be in another township, and that township would then reap the benefits of those additional dollars, and not our township, and not my business.
Okay. That makes sense. Thank you. That's quite what I said.
We can package under the cultivation license, but we can't make it into other products to sell along with the packaged flower.
That's interesting. Thank you.
Mr. Flayz, do you have a question?
So this is, you're not growing the marijuana here?
No, we're growing it, we're growing it in Montclair, and in the same exact building, in the same exact unit that we were approved for, for the first conditional use permit, we're also going to be doing manufacturing in that same space. It's really no additional equipment or any additional floor space needed, but we can't physically go in there and do certain things on work tables without having this official license.
Creating more products, that's it?
Yeah. Joints, it's mostly joints that we're going for. Other stuff you need to have a lot of equipment for.
Mayor.
Will the majority of that be shipped out somewhere else to sell? Are you expecting to have increased foot traffic, people coming in to get loose joints?
It's not open to the public, but we, we're hoping to sell to Kush Connection once they're able to get open in Montclair and other local retailers in the other area. But we're a small micro-business, so we don't have a lot of products to be able to sell across the state.
Thank you.
Other questions from the board? And I guess, Mr. Marshall, since we have you here, nothing's changed, it's not a home business, not going to be housed in a vehicle, still in the same location, all that?
Correct. Nothing's changed with our facility. We actually downsized our plans for construction to build out for less initial dollars, and those plans are currently in the building department, and once approved, we'll begin construction.
Okay. But it seems straightforward to me, and footprint's not changing, the business stays the same, same number of employees, just you're going to have a different product going out the door in addition to the first product.
Correct.
So I'm in favor of this, and unless anybody seems to have any major issues, I would move to approve this.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Welcome. Okay. We were going to hear application 2910, 152 High Street, but they have requested that we continue the hearing to April 21st?
That's correct.
Okay.
So if there's anybody here tonight for 152 High Street, that's going to be continued, heard in two weeks, on the 21st.
Two things.
Yes.
One, it's ironic that High Street should come after this application.
I don't make the agenda.
And secondly, I just want to let everybody know, I will not be here on the 21st, but my colleague Chuck Riboli will be.
Okay. So that will be continued. And then we get into new business, and first up, we have an amendment to the zoning ordinance concerning basements.
Yes. Try this again. I had our zoning officer, Mr. Bill Harrison from the Board of Adjustment, and Zenab Kazmi work through the definition of basements to address all of the issues, which I brought back to them after we talked about this at the last meeting. And what you have tonight is the result of their collaboration. And really, it's to assist the Board of Adjustment as they are reviewing applications and variances, to make sure that our definition is clear in how they want to apply it, so.
Well, this is painful, this, you know, to discuss this stuff, where we have to nerd out totally. So let's do the zoning committee a little bit more, because this is, you know, it's still, it's...
You want this to go to the zoning?
No, 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 but in the future, stuff like this.
Yeah.
So I saw what they did, you know, they put the six feet in.
Right.
I had written in, you know, and saying, if you make it half underground, it's more like a basement. The six feet I get, six feet above average grade, your average basement, if it's 10 feet floor-to-floor, with two feet of structure, eight feet, it'll be mostly above ground. And if that's okay, that's okay. I think that if it were that way, it would help with flooding basements, because they're, if it was that, they would be slightly more above grade. Of course, it could be the maximum, the six.
Right.
So I think that's, that's okay. Instead of it being mostly underground, which is usually a basement.
Right.
But I guess it's better than it was before, because you're defining what the average grade is around the building.
Right.
But if you look at story, story has the same old definition. So what I propose is, you just say, story is everything but a basement. Don't worry about defining story, so you should change what the story is and say, it's just not a basement, because you've defined basement.
I'll certainly bring that to their...
I need to email that over, because I thought, because it's still, it doesn't give, in the definition of story, it doesn't, it uses the old definition of basement, it doesn't say basement. And then half-story's cool, because it has its own definition, which seems like time-tested.
Okay. Can I just add, thank you, Tony, because the story definition was bothering me. I really didn't get it, and I was going to expose my ignorance here and say, I don't know what you're talking about, but with that explanation...
It's just not a basement.
It's clear, it's not a basement. Yeah.
Right.
It's either way, it'd be clear.
Right. It's much clearer if you just say that. Yeah, thank you.
And you don't have the word "half-story," because half-story is defined.
Fine. I mean, I was embarrassed, I was going to like, should I ask this question or not? But how many, raise your hands if you didn't get it either.
Yeah, but it seems straightforward to me. I mean, I started going back to our prior, well, no, no, basement, I'm just not even getting into story, just this definition of basement, I started thinking back to our last meeting, we were starting to talk about volume and half a volume and all that, and then I finally, just it dawned on me, this is just changing the definition of above mean grade to mean adjoining grade, and then defining what mean adjoining grade is.
Ten feet around, yeah.
And, and so to me, it's a, it's better, because it's more clear. There may be even better versions of this in the future, but I think if this is what the zoning board is saying, this would help them a lot, then I think it makes sense to me, and we should say yes.
But you're going to amend it to take out the story?
No, that's a separate definition.
Oh, you can have...
Yes.
You have to, you address the definite story separately.
Elsewhere, yeah.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So is there a motion to recommend this, this change to the council with the provision that we also amend the definition of story?
Before you do that, can I ask what the purpose of attaching the ordinance is to this? What, does it serve any purpose for the planning board? Because if so, I'd like to correct the language in this thing. There's something stuck to here that's called an ordinance, and I just wanted to know why that's included for the planning board.
Because the planning board is permitted by law to recommend ordinances to the council. And that's what this is.
Okay, no, that, that makes sense. So I'd like to make a change in the bottom where it says, now therefore be it ordained. The general language that we've used in this township for years is by the mayor and the council of the Township of Montclair, and so I'd like to just include that very minor change, please, that's why I asked. Thank you.
Okay.
That change is anything but minor.
Thank you. You know there's a reason that I, yep, you and I.
Okay, so...
I would move to approve it with the amendment that Mayor just raised, and with the recommendation that Mr. Ian Wally raised.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Okay.
Okay. Next up is the discussion of the housing element and fair share plan.
Okay. I thought I'd take advantage of our light agenda tonight, just to bring you up to date on where we are with the housing element and fair share plan. Looking at our meeting schedule and the council's meeting schedule, what I would like to do is schedule the public hearing on the housing plan for the May 5th planning board meeting.
Oh, great.
The council only has one meeting in June, so I think it's beneficial if you, the planning board, we have that public hearing at the first of the month, if we need to continue it to the second meeting in May, we have that option. But I'd really like to deliver the plan to the council for consideration at their June meeting, because we need a resolution of support, I mean, some type of support from the council before it gets sent by the June 30th deadline to the state. So I, or at least I'd like to have that opportunity to have that discussion, so.
Just a question?
Yeah.
Does the state have language that they like to see in the resolution of support?
No. They used, the rules have changed. I used to get resolutions, I forgot the exact language that I used under the old regulations, but they've changed, so I don't have a standard. Because what happens with the housing plan is, the housing plan portion of this is adopted by the planning board, because that's the part that's the master plan, right? It's the policy. But the way, we're also have to attach to this, under New Jersey law, what's called the fair share plan, which is the spending plan, the ordinances, and the program manuals. Those are not what gets adopted by the planning board. It gets approved, in theory, by the council, but you, it's, you're not adopting it, you know, when we, when the council considers it. Because you have, I forgot, I think it's six months or eight months to actually adopt the ordinances. So you could go, you don't, the fair share plan is recommended ordinances, but it's not the adoption of those ordinances. You have time afterwards to adopt those ordinances. So that's why, it's not a clear answer, but that's why I want to make sure that you have the opportunity to provide input into what the ordinances will be, and then over the next following, you know, six months or so, we'll be working on, on the specific language. Okay?
So the second half, you talked about the fair share plan, that's not part of the master plan?
Right.
Like, how does the costing out of that happen? Who does that?
I don't, what do you mean?
You said you have to do a, I forget what language you used.
The fair share plan is done.
Yeah, but you said it has to be costed out, I thought, something like that.
No, there's no costing out. I don't know what you mean by costing out, the fair share plan.
Predicting costs, no?
Spending plan.
It's a spending, thank you, the spending plan. The spending plan, we'll, I'll have the spending plan for you.
Oh, that'll be in there, so that nobody, you do that?
I do that.
Okay, thank you.
I did it in 2018, I've done them, yes.
Okay, thank, yeah, I get it, now, I'm sorry, I was thinking of something else.
Yeah, so that's, I'll have, those will be attached to the, to the housing plan. I'm not going to send them to the planning board, because I don't want you to get sidetracked on the spending plan. I, the ordinances will be all, working together on the specific, because we're, I'm going to make recommendations to, you know, create certain zoning districts, which I'll get into tonight, and you'll be involved in, in the discussion of the actual language of those districts, but that doesn't have to be done right now, we have six months to work that out. Have you've done these before, too?
Yes.
Okay.
It would be unrealistic for, for the council to adopt ordinances by June 30th. That's just not...
So we'll, we'll work on, you know, I'll work with the township council, the township attorney, and Arthur, and the manager, to make sure we get the right language for your June meeting. So anyway, that's why I want to have this public hearing in May. So what I'd like to do is...
Mr. Neiman's got a question.
Well, just a statement, selfishly, I know I'm not going to be able to make the May 5th meeting, so...
How dare you?
I know. And so, yeah. So if you guys want to take your time and carry it over to the second one, I'd love to be able to participate.
Okay.
Is that done by committee? Like, does a certain committee look at this, or is it just the whole council is taking a look at things?
Well, it has to be the whole council to take action. I would, I would feel comfortable having a resolution from the council, just saying that you, I guess it's, it used to be like endorsing the plan, obviously, we're going to work out all the details. So I'm trying to do, there's a lot, a lot in here, and as long as you support it, we'll work out the language.
No, sorry, Janice, I meant, is there a subcommittee of this group that looks at the plan? Or is it just...
We can, well, I think the discussion at the last meeting was to keep this through the whole, to the whole planning board, and, and not go to the...
Yeah, I'm just trying to clarify, yeah, yeah.
So that's the framework. One of the changes that I'm making in the, in my recommendation for the plan is, remember when I made my presentation in March, I did our, the calculations, we have an excess of, excess units from the third round. I think it was 143 excess credits for units that we've built, or was in our previous plan. What I recommend that we do is apply those credits to our 132-unit rehabilitation obligation. I've had some discussions with other planners, with the special master who was involved in Montclair in 2018, when we did our consent order that was approved by the judge for the spending plan. And the concern is, we want to, to make sure that we eliminate potential litigation involving our local preference. Local preference is something that almost, only one other municipality in the state, to my knowledge, has, and that's the city of Hoboken. Then New Jersey municipal, municipal land use law, and all our housing regulations include a regional preference, which means you have to draw, when you create affordable housing, you have to draw from the larger housing region, unless you can come up with a rationale that there is a need to prevent displacement of your existing lower-income populations within your town. And if, if you can prove that, then you are able to get a local preference. We do have a local preference, it was part of our spending plan, and so I'd like to keep that, but I was told by the special master that it's preferential to have fully, to show that you've fully addressed your affordable housing obligation, that significantly reduces the risk of litigation regarding our local preference, because we've already fully met our obligation, and we can then focus our policies as we're doing right now, and hopefully continue to make, to do our local preference in our affirmative marketing, which is what we do. So that's a major change, because last time I said, well, why would we want to take these valuable new construction credits and apply it to a rehabilitation obligation? The cost for new construction is a lot higher than it is for rehabilitation. So it's a, it's a policy decision. I don't think, in this, in this 10-year period, 2025 to 2035, we're not going to have a new construction obligation. That may be different in 2035, but we have to make the decision to commit those 143 units to the 132-unit rehabilitation obligation. She did say, if you, if, if the law changes and your urban aid designation changes, you know, you can then redo your housing plan. So, you know, we have, there is some flexibility. So I think right now, my recommendation would be to use those credits to, to address the rehabilitation obligation, which means we can design this housing plan, Montclair, to really fit our needs, you know, we're not fitting, addressing some state number. So what I, what I'm, what I have in the plan right now is I've identified areas where I, number one, I'd recommend keeping our inclusionary zoning ordinance. And I think I mentioned at the last meeting, keeping it at 20%, increasing it to 25% for any application requiring a use variance, okay? So if somebody comes in with a density variance, which is in most cases when they would be providing housing, or there's part of their application that's, puts it in a use variance category, rather than apply the 20% affordable housing set aside that applies to everybody, that public benefit applies to all projects of a certain size, they would have to actually provide a little bit more than everybody else, so that you're getting more of a public benefit than other development projects that don't require a use variance.
Just a question for you. So what you just said would not apply to redevelopment areas?
Well...
Because they don't, zoning doesn't apply to them, they have their own.
They, they have their own set aside.
Yeah.
So for instance, some of our redevelopment plans have a 20% set aside, some of them have a 10% set aside.
Yeah.
Okay? So just moving forward, any new redevelopment plans should have a 20% set aside, and I reinforce the 20% set aside, because I think it's pretty effective to getting affordable housing.
It won't have 25%, that's what I'm...
And 25% would be for any application...
Use variance.
For any use variance.
Yeah, but my point is that redevelopment plans, they don't apply for variances, you know, they have their own zoning, so to speak.
We would have to go back and amend all those redevelopment plans separately. The only ones that don't, that, that have a 10% would be the Seymour Street, which is built.
Yeah, I'm not advocating for changing those.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just trying to be clear, yeah.
What are the other ones? Seymour Street, what else?
The Montclair Center Gateway Redevelopment Plan, that's 10%, that's built. And then the other one's the Haines Redevelopment Plan, and that's...
And that's built.
Yeah, I'm not advocating for changing those.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just trying to be clear, yeah.
What are the other ones? Seymour Street, what else?
The Montclair Center Gateway Redevelopment Plan, that's 10%, that's built. And then the other one's the Haines Redevelopment Plan, and that's-
And that's built.
That's built. So, I don't, maybe we can make a record, the one that doesn't have a 20% set aside is the Elm New Mission Street Redevelopment Plan, but I think that whole plant, redevelopment plan needs to be redone anyway, because it's not consistent with our current zoning. So, yes.
Please, I just have a question. I would like to preface that I'm not against anything that you said, I certainly appreciate you giving it so much thought. I'm just trying to figure out why today, since you were the person, when you did the housing discussion before, that mentioned that some people were doing 25% and other things, and quite frankly, I think you got some of the residents in the community really energized that that was a possibility. So what in your thought process changed such that now you're seemingly backing away from the 25%, unless there's a use variance?
Because I think the 20% works. There's a lot of, and I know there was, people bring samples of some towns that have a 30% set aside, but you, that's not comparing apples to apples. The higher set asides generally come, are projects that have other subsidies. If there's no other subsidies, and ours, and our set aside of 20% has no other subs, that's just across the board. If you're, if you're providing additional funding, or you're requiring that they get tax credits, or funding from the state, then yes, you can increase the, the set aside beyond the 20%, because it's being subsidized by grants.
Or public land, if it's based on public land?
Yeah. Well, public land should be 100% affordable. Let me go through my presentation.
Okay, okay, yeah. Yeah, no, thank you, because it's important that, you know, we all understand that.
So I'm just gonna-
Especially since you were the one that put the idea out there.
Right. So, I'm going to give you the broad view, and obviously, I'll go into a lot more details next month at the, at the public hearing, but-
Can I just understand though, so what you're talking about in the housing plan, this is just kind of a compendium of ideas. It's nothing that we're particularly pushing, or that we agree with should be done. It's just, these are options that are in our plan.
Well, normally, normally, you have to do them, but because we are, our obligation is zero-
Yeah.
We're not under the, we're not required to do them.
Thank you.
Okay, so you won't find many planners saying that, but at this point, I mean, the planners, it would, I recommend that we do it, but we don't have to.
I just don't want the public to think that all the things that we've outlined as potential ways to increase affordable housing are things that we're going to do, because-
The one thing I have to, well, let me go through the whole thing.
Yeah, okay.
I'm not proposing, I'm not proposing any major zoning changes, I'm proposing site-specific zoning changes, all right? Because, the one thing, when you do affordable housing, you can zone, you can do, it's essentially spot zoning, put an affordable housing overlay zone on a specific piece of property, and let me get into that in a little bit more detail. So when I-
And just, but, but the broad overview of an element of the Master Plan is, it's kind of the vision-
Yeah.
-for the township. So, it's not something that we have to do, but it is presenting, here's what the vision should be, according to this body.
I agree, yeah, it is a vision, but it's not required.
But this is your, your vision, or is this from-
It's this body's vision.
Planning Board.
But we haven't gotten there yet.
Yeah, we're not there yet.
Okay, yeah.
But ultimately, it's this body's vision.
Correct, and then it'll be the council's vision, when it goes to the council, right?
No.
It doesn't come to the council.
So the, the housing element is only here at the Planning Board.
Okay.
It's only us, does not go to the council. The Fair Share Plan is the council's purview.
So, so, one of the things that I have to-
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm just not, I need to ask this question, because it has to do with something, I don't know if you're going to get there, not at the beginning, you said something about the 143, the credits, right, that we have, and you said that you are now recommending that they go to the 132 rehabilitation units.
Right.
So, I'm just wondering how, how we know that those units will come up before another opportunity. So, for example, if we get some, some new units, say, on Wildwood, because we have property there, and suppose that we decide to go there, you still don't think that we should use those credits? We should just leave those credits sitting, waiting until we get, because we, we had also had a discussion about how hard it's going to be actually for us to find 132 rehabilitation units.
Right.
So I'm trying to figure out, if you, if you put that in writing, might there come a time when we could use them for the new development if we needed to? Or once it's in writing, do you have to hold it just for the rehabilitation units?
So, I, that's the exact question I had with our special master.
See, I think like the special mass.
And she said, Janice, if your urban aid designation changes, you will have the opportunity to revise your plan, because the rules have changed. So, that's why it's my best recommendation right now to use it to apply to the rehabilitation, to eliminate the potential for litigation. We're not going to be litigated, because we're not meeting our affordable housing requirement.
Okay.
We may have faced litigation because of the local preference, which I think is really important to Montclair, is to do the local preference. But I don't think we're going to, if things change, and they probably won't change till 2035, we'll be able to reevaluate that.
Thank you.
So-
Janice, last question. The 20, the, local preference arose from the 2018 judicial, I guess it was a consent order or some kind of-
Consent order.
Yeah, it came through that whole, I mean, we made some changes, and then at the, all those ordinances were approved as part of that consent order, and that was in there. Okay? So, what I do have to do is, and I've talked about this, is identify places where I think affordable housing will be created. And I've called it redevelopment, although redevelopment doesn't mean we actually go through a redevelopment process, but there are some properties that are underutilized, and they may be redeveloped either with township, township involvement, or through the private market, and just trying to get an idea of where this may occur. One of them is, of course, the area surrounding the police station. We've worked on a redevelopment plan, it was never adopted, but just recognizing that that is an area where development can occur, and the existing density is 55 units per acre. I'm not recommending any changes to the density. But I've identified areas where I think additional affordable housing could occur in this 10-year period, that's one of them. The other area is these large properties that are underutilized in the Walnut Street-Greenwood area, the DeCamp bus stop, uh, bus depot, and the Northwest Essex Development Facility on Walnut Street. Those two properties together, of course, they straddle the railroad tracks, but those are large properties that are underutilized, and may, over this 10-year period, become available for development. In that instance, they're in the C2 Zone, I believe the density is 28 units per acre. So I'm just recognizing is, we may see opportunities for additional affordable housing developed in that area as well. I included the Acme Shopping Center, not changing the existing zoning, just recognizing that that is a large property. A lot of it is surface parking, if it was reconfigured, you could probably do mixed-use development under the existing zoning there. It's in the NC Zone, it permits dense development, I think it's up to three stories, at a density of 28 units per acre. So that may happen. I'm not saying that we're making any zoning changes, but I just identified those are the three larger properties in the town where it's potential, where the private market, or if the township decides to do a redevelopment plan, where we might have some additional affordable housing through our inclusionary zoning ordinance. I identified township-owned properties, the Wildwood Avenue property, which we have evaluated in the past, it can be subdivided to create four lots on, on Wildwood Avenue, and develop for two, two-family housing. In that instance, my recommendation would be for the township to put this in a separate two-family zone. I did do an evaluation of the other uses along that, along that strip of land, and there are two, three-family houses on that, that block between the park and Grove Street, and six two-family houses. So my recommendation would be for the township to subdivide it and put those in a separate two-family zone, requiring 100% affordable. So you'd get, you'd get eight affordable units, and basically, it would be a combination of low and moderate income housing, very similar to the approach that we took on Talbot Street with Talbot Village.
I just wanted to ask, what is the current zoning of that Wildwood Street?
What is it? Right now, it's R1.
Oh, it's R1, but there's a lot of R2s.
But there's, but as I said, there's, there's two three-family houses and six two-families on that stretch. So I think it could be designed to fit in with the neighborhood very well. Okay?
Excuse me, and just to follow along the same train, I thought, why would we not change the zoning to, like, an R2 or something, to include the rest of them that are seemingly taken over there? You don't want to encourage the rest of them, or what would be the negative side of just changing that?
I think it would be an easier lift for the township, just to do an overlay zone on the proper, a two-family affordable overlay zone. If you wanted to extend that to the entire street, it might be a little more difficult-
Okay.
-to get decision to make. You can, but my, what I'm trying to do is, is, if we want to make this affordable housing a reality, the easiest way is just to do an overlay zone on that property, you know, that section.
Okay.
I'm trying, I don't want to unnecessarily complicate these things.
Received, thank you.
Are we commenting, or just?
Well, let me, let me go through-
You want to say what?
And then, and then give you comments, because I might answer your question as I go through.
My bad.
I did the same thing for 53, 55, New Street. Now, I know that there was some talk about using that for open space, we can take it off, but it can be subdivided to create two two-family houses, and that was in the previous housing plan. I think it would fit well with the neighborhood, you could put the, a shared parking, a shared driveway between, and the parking in the back, and you could get four affordable units on New Street. 14 Miller Street, I included in here, we purchased that property, it's got a three-family house on it. Simply put, I think we need to sell that property, or lease it, but probably sell it, I think is the better way to approach it, to an organization to manage that, either for rent or for sales units, for 100% affordable. And 53, 55, New Street would also be, all of these projects that I'm talking about, because it's township-owned land, I would say that had to be 100% affordable. The Mountain Avenue Train Station, I don't know if you're familiar, any of you are familiar with the Mountain Avenue Train Station?
Mm-hmm.
Interesting, this is one of the most historic structures in the township, it was built in 1893. I took a tour of it, because it's historically been used for residential. It has, it has had a second-floor apartment since 1935. It's owned by New Jersey Transit, and it's been leased to the township. I know we're negotiating our New Jersey Transit lease, but that's, historically, it's been leased to the township, and over the years, we have rented out that apartment for residential use. Had, it always had a requirement that whoever lived in that apartment had to maintain the waiting room downstairs, open it in the morning, you know, basically make sure everything was kept clean. So my suggest, it's, has not been used for an apartment, probably since 2008. A lot of the improvements have been, have been ripped out, the interior is in really poor shape, so I think it would be, if we, we have an opportunity, we can make this one of our affordable units, we would have to put some money in to rehabilitate it, but I think, again, this is an opportunity, it's actually a very, could be a very nice apartment. It's not huge, but it's got two bedrooms and a kitchen, you know, and a bathroom, and it's in a beautiful building, and if we rehabilitate it, you get the, the added value of rehabilitating a very historic structure. So I think we can add that to our affordable housing inventory as well.
You wouldn't be able to include the requirement that they open the waiting room, though, would you?
Why not?
I don't know, like, as part of, like, being a state affordable housing, meeting the rules requirements, can you add, like, a third-party requirement like that?
Well, you tell me why I can't, or why we can't.
I don't, I don't have a good reason to say one way or the other, but the one thing I, like, I don't-
If you give them a rent reduction in, in exchange for-
It's creative, I like the idea, I just, I didn't know if the rules and regulations around it would make that difficult.
Yeah.
I tell you, I used to use that train station when there was an apartment up there, and they did consistently open up the waiting room. I don't know what their requirement was, what the lease said, but it seemed to work.
It's a creative idea.
Yeah.
Hey, is somebody wanted-
Is it possible to do something like that at Wachong Station, for example?
No, they don't think it's a residential unit at Wachong.
Could it be made into a residential unit?
I don't, I think that would be really hard, because that's really a waiting room.
Yeah.
Don't they have two floors?
I don't think, I haven't, I don't believe it has a two-floor, unless there's one down below.
Yeah, that's what I'm-
I'll have to double check.
It could be, because there is a lower level there, yeah.
Could, that could maybe even be accessible now.
I mean, you can also maybe allow somebody to have a small coffee, you know, concession there.
Something to be done with that station.
Yeah.
The Walnut Station.
Well, Walnut can be-
You know, that little restaurant type of thing there?
Yeah, that's one of the things that, I know Daniel from my office is working with the Economic Development Committee, and the manager, and the attorney to, in negotiating the New Jersey Transit lease, because there's been a lot of interest in opening a retail use inside the Walnut Street Station, and in the Wachong Station, so. But I thought it would be really good to, if we're going to do this, this Mountain Avenue Train Station, it's a residential area, and so, and it's such a pretty building, it would be nice to make that. Moving on, we've talked about faith-based organizations. I have some zoning recommendations to allow faith-based organizations to provide 100% affordable housing if they're, as part of their reuse option of their existing facilities. There's over 58 acres of land in Montclair that are owned by faith-based organizations, and I'll get into that in a little bit more detail, but I focused on, let me, this is kind of a little bit all over the place. I'd already talked to you at the last meeting about the faith-based organizations, and the non-conforming properties in residential zones, although I don't focus on those in my recommendations. One of the other things that I came up with is rooming house conversions, and, you know, oddly enough, Carmel, you asked me this morning, what are the addresses of all those rooming houses, and all those alternative living, and I've compiled them all. And, Montclair, we have 113, we have nine rooming houses right now. One, two, three, four, five, six, yeah, nine rooming houses with 113 units, I guess is how you would call them, beds. Some of them have apartments, most of them are just bedrooms, in the R2, R3, and R4 Zone districts. So my suggestion is, and I, we tried to acquire 34 Union Street, which really was a lost opportunity, because that building needs a lot of investment. And one of the things is, these rooming houses would be really good locations for supportive housing. We've talked, met with people from Cohom, that's supportive housing for peoples with special needs, they're looking for places where they can create a model where residents that need some type of supportive housing can live communally with people who are, don't require any supportive housing. So, you already have that structure in some of these rooming houses, which, you know, if they could acquire those, and we could provide a potential funding source to give them some money to, to create that, those rooming houses would create an opportunity. I also identified with some investment in those rooming houses to maybe reduce the number of rooms and add kitchens and bathrooms, using money from our housing trust fund, then we could actually make those into apartments, then they would be, get credit as a, as a new affordable unit. So that's one idea, is focusing on those rooming houses. So, the other thing that I've been focusing on in this plan is- So the other thing that I've been focusing on in this plan is, and I mentioned this before, is the naturally occurring affordable housing. And we took, spent some time looking at the areas. As I mentioned, this is the area that used to have worker housing. This was historically, you know, the black neighborhoods on New and Mission and Fulton Place. Basically, that's where a lot of people got their start, a lot of families got their start, as part of worker housing. And there were mills in that area as well, where the people either worked in the estate section and lived here, or they were working in the mills that were also located in Mont And over time, those have become a place where various immigrant populations have moved and also gotten their start in Montclair. So there's a lot of history there. But they're also, most of those areas are located in the R2 zone. For the most part, they don't meet any of the requirements of the R2 zone. In fact, according to my, our analysis, the average lot width in the area is 38 feet. The lot width requirement is 60 feet. And very similarly, the side yard setback, the R2 zone requires a side yard setback of six feet on one side and 10 feet on the other. None of them meet that, those requirements, or very few of them meet those requirements. So what we're trying to do is craft a separate zoning district for those areas that reflect the existing lot sizes. But I know the other concern is to preserve the size and scale of the houses. So we're looking at a floor-area ratio for this area, a sliding-scale floor-area ratio. So based on the analysis that we looked at, lots under 5,000 square feet would have an FAR of .5, whereas lots over 10,000 square feet would have an FAR of .35. That has to do, a floor-area ratio is a means of controlling the volume of a house. And these floor-area ratios are actually based on an analysis of what the floor area is right now, so that it fits the sizes of the houses that are there right now. So that's another recommendation that we have in here.
I'm sorry, that's without the exterior that you said is not in con... That's without, thank you, the exterior that you said is not in conformance with the...
That's the lot. You know, we would come up with, you know, we would make the lot, so that we could make the lot requirements meet what the actual lot sizes are, but add this extra layer to ensure that the houses don't overwhelm the size of the lots. Because they're mostly, they are modest houses, as we've talked about. And these recommend, these are recommendations only, we can have further discussions about, I can give you all the analysis that was done, and we can look at the actual numbers. But this is the direction that we recommend. And this is not creating deed-restricted affordable housing. It's really just preserving the, when I said the naturally occurring affordable housing that's been historic to this neighborhood.
So is this a special overlay district?
This would actually be rezoning that area, not even an overlay.
Rezoning the entire area.
Yeah, and it's not, it's just creating an, I think I called it the R2A-zone district.
Okay.
Okay. Just one other thing, and the other item that we, this is also an area that we're looking at the, doing the, the intensive historic survey for a good portion of these properties, so that the total demolition process requirement that we have for our historic areas would also apply for this, before a building could be demolished.
It is FAR in simple terms, a .5 FAR, does that mean you could build a one-story building on half the lot?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, am I misunderstanding, but it seems like this idea is deliberately keeping those houses smaller.
Yes.
So I'm an owner of one of those houses.
Not in this, you're in this district?
No, no, no. I'm just...
Okay, oh. Why, I don't...
If you were an owner of one of the houses.
If I were an owner of one of those houses, it sounds, it seems like you're, it's like a deliberate attempt to keep me, my house small, and I can't reap the benefits like everybody else in town of adding an addition or doing something which will increase the value of the house. Is that, am I missing the point?
I can, yes, it's, it's keeping the houses, it's limiting, it depends on the specifics of each house, on where you are with this FAR. If you, if there's room, you could expand it. If not, you can't without getting a variance. The other issue is, I think, a lot of these houses are being acquired by investors.
Right.
And what we're trying to do is, is keep them less attracted to investors and more attractive to homeowners. Also, we talked about targeting our home improvement program. This would be an area, if you so choose to do a home improvement program, you no longer have to, but you can target this area.
But I've lived there for generations. I've built up wealth.
In theory.
In theory, yeah, in theory. If I've lived there for generations, I've built up some wealth. There's historically, the black population has less wealth built up than the white population, yet it seems like you're, this would deliberately tamp down on the ability for the owners of those properties to maximize the value of their houses. Who cares who buys it? In a sense, they don't care. If an investor comes in and says, I'm going to give you triple the value of the house, yippee, is what they'll say.
What we're doing is, we're keeping it, we're putting these limitations so that the scale of those, that neighborhood scale remains what it is today.
As a neighborhood, as a public benefit, you're saying, it benefits the public, but me individually, it doesn't benefit if you're keeping the size of my house smaller. That's all, I'm me.
Hey, it sounds like under the existing zoning, most lots don't conform anyways, so you'd have to get a variance.
Right.
You still have to get a variance in this new scenario, too, it seems.
It just seems like it's a...
I get your point, though.
Yeah, that's, that is my point.
It seems like either way, to expand, any property owner, whomever it is, investor, person of, in your generation, still would have to get a variance to do any sort of large, larger-scale expansion, or just any expansion, quite frankly.
Would you, would you have to get a variance to put a second story on your house?
If the...
Most of those are two-story houses.
You would. If you don't meet the side yard setbacks, and most of them don't, you'd have to get a variance to put a second story on the house. Even though it's been non-conforming?
You're not taking up any more land space, you're not changing the ratio of land to whatever.
You are increasing the intensity of the, on the property. So anytime, that's why there's so many variances. If anytime you're putting, if you're expanding in the back, if you're expanding up, if the expansion does not meet the side yard setback, that's a variance.
Yeah, but if it's going up, it's not changing any of the front yard, side yard, or any other.
But it's not meeting the requirement, so you're increasing the non-conformity.
Now, I think an applicant would say, well, it's a pre-existing condition, a pre-existing non-conformity, don't penalize me for that.
But the pre-existing condition's at one story. It gets intensified when it goes up.
I think you'd get both, like, you'd probably hear that argument from the applicant, and, you know, your point is also accurate.
Yeah.
Let me just make sure, Ms. Willis, did we answer your question?
It was an answer, but not to me satisfaction.
Well, even if you don't agree with the answer...
I think logically, I don't agree with the answer. The thing is, to me, it doesn't make a very strong point for anything that's...
I think the neighbors would say it does. You know, going from a one-story non-conforming structure to a two-story non-conforming structure does limit the light and air to the adjoining properties. So that's the concern, and that's why they all go to the zoning board.
Mr. Neiman?
Yeah, so I think this type of neighborhood is a very clear example of the difficulties and kind of contradictions inherent in zoning the way that we do, for a whole host of reasons. And I think to Carmel's point, zoning has done that for all of town in its own ways, right? It's just here, it feels very proximate, because we could, in making that suggestion, help bring it into being. But like, the minute you put an R1 zone over something, you have, to some extent, constrained its economic value. Especially, for example, around the train stations in upper Montclair, right? It is likely not the highest and best use, from an economic perspective, to have a single-family home two doors away from a train station. And so the minute we have zoned property at all, you are putting some sort of cap on its economic value, and therefore, there is some sort of taking from the property owner. So here, it feels very proximate, because the power lies, to some extent, within our hands. But like, that's the norm of zoning. That's just kind of inherent in it. But then, additionally specific to this neighborhood, the pre-existing non-conformities, it's kind of silly when you start to think about it too much, right? Like, it doesn't comply with the zoning, but it was there first. And so like, you're retroactively making something illegal, which you generally can't do in the United States. You can't say something is illegal after the fact. And so the fact that you just want to put a second story, which, if the person who owned it had been smart enough to, in say, 1934, before the rules were set, right, they would have had no problem doing it, but now I need to go before the zoning board and get a variance and XYZ, right? Like, it starts to feel a little silly, because the house is already there, I just want to put on that second floor. And I think that's also highlighted by the fact that all the lots are too small. And so this also came up on the application we just continued, where all of the lots in that block were not conforming with the zoning there, too. And so I think incorporating into any analysis of zoning changes is looking at the sections of town where there are significant numbers of non-conformities, and adjusting those zonings to make the zoning fit the reality, rather than hope the reality starts to match the zoning.
Right, and I think that's exactly where, as we move into, hopefully, working on our master plan, we can look at the entire town and do a better job, and maybe coming up with floor-area ratios that ensure that the scale of the new houses meets the size of the houses that are currently there. You'll see that, I think that was one of my recommendations with the, that High Street subdivision.
Yeah.
So.
I don't know who was first over here.
Oh, it doesn't matter. Go ahead. No, I just, it just bothers me that it seems like you're economically hurting a population that's only, that owns these houses by doing something artificial, so that they can't reap the maximum benefit of their property. And that, that kind of bothers me. This is America, we have private property, we should be able to maximize the value, but...
So I would like to commend you on this masterful plan that you have here, and I think it's one of the first answers that I've heard. And people say, well, what can we do to slow down on gentrification? And I understand wholeheartedly why it's necessary, especially in the areas that you're talking about. Historically, those neighborhoods have been people low, moderate income, and when the developers come in and they're, you know, built on whatever, they can explode, and it pushes people out. I understand Councilor Lockman, you know, why you're saying it looks like it's hurting, you know, the people that own it, and it may be. But I celebrate you, because I think we have to take a stand and make a decision, either we are trying to accomplish these things in Montclair, or we're not, and there's no straddling the fence in some areas. It's actually hurting the residents of low and moderate income when we don't put a stop to that, because those are the families that have laid the foundation of this wonderful township that are being forced out of here, because by adding a second story or expanding the house, they now cannot afford to stay there. So I get all the different things, but I think that those are the same types of conversations people had when they were talking about, you know, whether we're going to have, what we're going to have in our inclusionary zoning ordinance and everything, there's always different things, and somebody may, you know, get their investment, not as much, or whatever. But I applaud you for that, Janice, and I think that you should continue to think about those, as we explore what we can do with those R-O zones, in terms of putting supportive housing there, just like the supportive housing you were suggesting in some of the other neighborhoods.
Let me get there.
Okay. But you like the way I snuck that in there.
Yeah, I know where you're coming from.
I just want to make a, put a pin in something, which is, you talked about converting possibly some of the rooming houses into apartments and possibly lessening the number of units there. And I'd be a little hesitant there, because those, too, are something like a naturally-occurring affordable housing. Where I understand the amenities and service provided by the unit is less than a lot of people would prefer, it is often the only option affordable at that price, and shelter is very important in any sense. And so I'd be a little nervous about limiting the number of naturally-occurring affordable units in that sense. I don't want to harm the most vulnerable, and taking away those units would be...
That's, that's a good point, and I thought the same thing. I mean, they're filling a need, but some of them are in poor condition. Unfortunately, we cannot use our housing trust fund to fix up those units if they're not going to be an apartment with their own kitchen and bathroom. Unless, I looked through the new regulations, and I don't see where it allow us to improve rooming houses without bringing them, making them, giving them those additional items.
And is that regulatory, or is that in the legislation?
We now have new draft regu, it's a rule proposal.
Okay. And that's not something where the special master could make, like the local preference, right, where we're able to get a specific carve-out? Is it possible that if we had a plan that said we're going to rehabilitate these units and, you know, that's not a way to get around the regulation?
If the, if the township wants to do that, we'd have to ask for permission from the judge to bypass that requirement. Okay?
Yeah, I'd like to second that. I was thinking along, absolutely along the same lines as Jake, that that's not much housing in Montclair, is single-room occupancy, or whatever you want to call it. But we do have, how many units, how many?
113.
113 units.
And we allow it at all, which is kind of remarkable.
Yeah, and we do allow it, so I think we should, you should talk to your special master and see if this is something that we can do.
Okay, all right.
Yeah. And especially fund it by our housing trust fund, right? Fund improvements.
Okay, and perhaps, if that's the issue, is they're not deed-restricted. This is how I would say that. I would ask if we can use our housing trust fund to make improvements to those housing units, but have them deed-restricted us. And I don't know how you'd come up with the affordability controls, because there's no bathroom, you know, it's apples and oranges. So we'll have to figure that out, but, because right now, there's no restrictions on them.
Yeah, but these are privately owned, you can't just...
Yes, oh, of course you can.
You can deed-restrict.
If they're going to take our money, we always deed-restrict it.
Okay.
Always.
Yeah, yeah.
They're agreeing in this circumstance, it's not being forced on them the way zoning is.
And in fact, under the new regulations, if it's a rental unit, it has to have a 40-year deed restriction. A sales unit...
But why would, why would a landlord do that? Like, he can not deed-restrict.
Because he wants the money.
No, but he's getting lower rents, right? If it's deed-restricted affordable housing...
Well, no, in this instance, it might be the same rents that he actually gets for those, for those rooming houses.
Township may make up the difference between what somebody's paying.
You'd make up the difference in the rental, yeah. Okay, well, I'd like to see what the plan is, because I don't know if it's realistic, you know, without not thinking about it, yeah.
All I'm saying is, we can't...
You have to put your head in the landlord's head.
To spend our money in our housing trust fund, we have to put a deed restriction. It has to be 40 years for a rental, 30 years for a sales. If it's supportive housing, then it's a little bit different.
So when we, there was the program to rehabilitate, you got up to $25,000 to...
That's a 10-year.
That's, okay. So even, but like, even for the single-family homes, that took that, that had that, there would be a 10-year deed restriction?
Right, so if we're just, yes, a 10-year deed restriction. They have to be income-eligible, and it's a 10-year deed restriction, and if they sell it before that, then they have to pay the money back on a prorated basis.
Gotcha. And that deed restriction had a schedule for what the, the sales price was allowed to be over that period of time?
I don't think it's the sales price.
Or they just weren't allowed to...
No, we don't care about the sales price, we just, we just want to get...
Get your money back.
The money back.
Right, okay.
If it's a rental unit, then...
So it wasn't a, it was, it was a deed restriction that said, if you sell it within 10 years, you have to pay us back?
Right, because the deed restriction goes to the tenant or the owner is income-eligible.
Gotcha.
Okay, and so that, that eligible, income-eligible owner or tenant has to be there for 10 years. And if the tenant changes, it has to go to another income-eligible tenant. So that's how, when you take the, our money, that's one of the requirements.
I don't want to get into the details of it, but how do you make sure a tenant is going to be there for 10 years?
We get, do incomes, oh, you don't know?
You don't know, right?
If they change, then you have to do an income certification of whoever the tenants Now you wonder why administering, you know, affordable housing administration's kind of a big, big task, because we have a lot of units. Okay, so that's, good points on that. Let me move on to a couple of other points I have in here. Let me move on to a couple of other points I have in here. I'm making recommendations to the affordable housing ordinance. I just reiterated the rationale for our local preference. Has to be in our new plan, so I'm not going to go over that right now. I told you about the IZO. I recommend increasing the in lieu of payment. The in lieu of payment, I know we talked about this, Carmel, right now is $197,000. Remember, that's not the cost to build an affordable unit. That's the subsidy, okay? The in lieu of payment is the subsidy because there's an intrinsic value to the unit that you get at the end of the day. Which what we're, the in lieu of payment is the subsidy.
It's too low. It was 250 several years ago.
No, it wasn't.
Yes, it was.
It's a hundred, the subsidy.
No, no, no. It was never in our plan at 250, but the information that we got from affordable housing people.
That's the cost of the unit, not the subsidy to create.
I don't know why you're arguing for it to be lower. It should be higher.
So right now it's $197,000. I'm recommending it go up to 250.
Okay. Several years ago when I looked at this, the affordable housing people recommended it be 250. So I think we need to talk about that number.
We can talk about it. We don't really use it that much, but again, it's the subsidy. I took the $197,000. Imagine, this is the rationale. What is the cost per square foot for residential development? 250?
Probably closer to 300 these days.
250 to 300. So if it's, if the average affordable unit's 1,000 square feet, the cost is 250 to $300,000. I'm recommending 250,000.
Let's start at three.
Okay. That was the rationale that I used to come up with the 250. I took what was approved in 20, when we got our previous housing, was amended in 2021. The in lieu of payment was $197,000 in 2021. I just took it out to 2025, which brought me to $245,000. The rationale being the cost is, you know, for a thousand square foot unit, $250 a square foot gets you at $250,000 for the subsidy. So because there's a value to the unit that's at the end of the day.
Can we tie that to an inflation metric?
Yeah, absolutely. That's how it usually is done.
So that it changes every year?
We can see about that.
I mean, that's what happens with insurance companies.
Yeah, that's very good.
Yeah, we get insurance inflation factor and that's where I originally got the first number. I looked at my units and I said, what does my insurance company value these at? And that's where we got the original number that we started from. And you looked at something else then and you made it 198. And they were pretty close.
Janice, will this be shared with us in a way that we can take off, take away and just digest on our own time?
Yeah, I know.
It will, yes.
Okay.
Yes. Again, the public hearing will be a month from now. This is 60 pages. I'll get, I'll get it to you as I'm wrapping it up, okay?
Like in the next week or two, maybe? I'm just wondering because I assume what Mr. Campbell's asking for is some.
I have to notice 10 days in advance, so it'll be probably in another week or two I'll send this out to you, okay?
Thank you.
I'm just trying to get the feel from the board on.
Of course, of course. But I know what Mr. Campbell's going, or at least I think I know what Mr. Campbell's going for. It's like, this is a lot of information. It'd be nice to kind of have our own time with it to come back with some intelligent responses.
And questions.
Now going back to the Houses of Worship. Right now, Houses of Worship are permitted as a conditional use in the R2, R3, OR3, R4 and OR4 zone districts. Many Houses of Worship, however, are in the RO, ROA, R1 and the NC zone districts where they are not permitted uses. So my suggestion is make them a permitted uses in those zone districts because they're already there. And that they, we should amend the conditional use standards to permit adaptive reuse of existing buildings for 100% affordable housing and to permit development of unused land for 100% multifamily housing as well. With appropriate.
I'm sorry, Janice, I didn't get that last thing.
And to permit development of unused land, much like the church at the corner of Fullerton and, was it Plymouth? Where they put those two, two-family houses there, I mean, two, one-family houses for 100% affordable multifamily housing with appropriate design controls. That's the key, design controls to make it look like a single-family house. Historic buildings can be preserved and new construction can maintain existing neighborhood character. Senior and supportive housing should be a permitted use. Now what I do recommend.
So I'm sorry, are we supposed to be following you because there was a sentence in there that you were reading? And I'm just trying to figure out what it was when you were talking about for 100% some type of use. It was not the affordable housing. It was something else in there.
No, 100% affordable.
Oh, supportive.
Yeah, or supportive housing.
Okay, that's what, I just couldn't understand what you were saying, so.
So this is a general recommendation. In my experience, it takes a lot of work and a lot of, on behalf of the various Houses of Worship, to actually make these things a reality. So I would write, in terms of this plan, I'd like to focus on one particular property and some zoning proposals for that particular property. And this is, this is the Mount Carmel, the convent for the Mount Carmel Holy Church, which is vacant. And perhaps doing an affordable housing overlay zone on just that property. It's in the R4 zone and coming up with, I had a couple of recommendations saying that in that overlay zone, if I could find my notes here, we would allow 100% affordable housing. With a, and I, of course, I can't find it right now. It's in a separate section of this plan. Oh, it might be in a previous version of this. So anyway, I proposed an overlay zone for that particular property with requirements in terms of setbacks and stuff to create a separate lot to allow access through the church. I think you could get six units. It's not a very big building.
I know that building well.
Yeah.
My panelists in that, that was an apartment building. That wasn't a comment to begin with. That was an apartment building that the church bought to, when we had our school and the Philippine Sisters came. That's what they used to live in while they taught in the school. The school was open for nine years. So I think you're taking value away from the church. Because right now that could be six market rate units. So why would you penalize the church?
Because the church is interested in providing affordable housing at that location.
They are.
But what's, what's preventing them from turning that into affordable housing?
It's already, it's already a multifamily building.
Well, I mean, we have, we have suggested that, that they, I've been trying to work with them to get affordable housing there. I can't tell you if organizationally they're having problems moving ahead, but they were very interested in doing that. We can, if we put the zoning in place, we provide, you know, if they want to put 100% affordable housing there, we can allocate some funds to that.
But why would we do that when Mount Carmel is sitting on valuable land? And why would we as taxpayers subsidize that when Mount Carmel itself could pay for it?
I don't think Mount Carmel has money.
The diocese, they're associated with the Immaculate Conception.
Oh, that's a whole story.
No, I don't, I don't.
They don't have any money.
Yeah, they're looking for, they're looking, they were talking to developers.
Yeah.
There's affordable housing organizations out there who, not, we wouldn't develop it, but there's affordable housing providers out there who can work with the church to actually create it. So essentially what I'm trying to do is eliminate, is provide zoning to permit that as a separate lot. Make it 100%, as long as it's 100% affordable housing. I think it, they were very interested in doing that and we can help them.
Is it, is it on the, the rectory on this?
It's certainly, I'm just, one question.
Next door building.
It's. They can put, they can do market rate housing if they wanted to. But where's the public benefit in that? This is an opportunity to provide a public benefit at that location. They're interested in doing it. I don't see the downside.
Why don't they do, want two market and one affordable, something like that? So that we don't have to subsidize them. We as a town don't have to subsidize it. That's what I'm trying to get at. I'm concerned about taxpayers.
Also, we all, we have, our spending plan is, we all have a $5 million spending plan.
I understand that, but there's lots of uses for that.
Like what?
Like all the building you were talking about on like, if you want, went with Wildwood. If you do the AMP, you'd make some kind of, you know, redevelopment plan there and you want affordable housing.
That's going to be funded by developers.
Are you saying that you'd have difficulty spending $5 million in some kind?
Absolutely, yes.
Oh, okay. I didn't realize that.
Yeah, because it comes with a lot of strings.
Yeah, all right.
Is it on the same lot from like a tax map perspective?
It's on the same lot as the church. It's not a separate lot.
And so amongst other reasons why it would be difficult is they'd have to get a subdivision. And they'd have to come and get site plan and all that. And, and having looked at the zoning of that lot in the past, I believe the, because we reviewed an application for an apartment building there. Yeah, and the frontage minimum is 150 feet for that zone. And I don't think there's a single lot anywhere near there, anywhere close to that. And so that's one of those other locations where the zoning just does not reflect the reality. And if anything, it seems that the zoning in place kind of binds Mount Carmel in a lot of ways because they can't just sell off a portion of it to, you know, do one apartment building or two. They're kind of stuck within all or nothing situation. And so I think this is a pretty straightforward way to get six affordable units. And it's a creative reuse of the space. And I think to Carmel's point about them taking advantage of the assets they have as well, looking at the zoning there and finding a way to make it conform with the pre-existing reality would be helpful to that side of things.
And all we were doing is I would recommend putting an affordable housing overlay zone.
Yeah.
You know, and that way, you know, it would have to be 100% affordable. You know, we create an overlay zone and if they choose to go in that direction, we can do it. It's focused, it's not that easy to do affordable housing with faith-based organizations because there's a lot to overcome. So I just focused on that one and I think that this would, would be kind of a model that we could use for, for others if it works at this location and they're farther along than some of the other organizations.
Just a question for you. So when you talk about faith-based housing, are you talking also about rectories?
If it's, rectories are generally on.
No, like my church, the rectory is, you know, it's a million and a half valued building. And could that be turned into affordable housing?
Yeah.
Under what you're talking about.
Why couldn't it?
Because it's an R1 zone.
It doesn't have to, but it can.
Okay.
Which let me go through the rest of my presentation because the other issue, there's a lot of properties that are used for senior housing in residential neighborhoods that you don't even, you don't even know that they're there because they look like a single-family house, which is a rectory. It looks like a single-family house. So that was residential zoning changes. I recommend a couple of changes to the C2 zone just to, just to clarify the requirements. We haven't really touched the C2 zone require, this is where I anticipate development will happen around Walnut Street. Just to clarify from mixed use development, that it's, you know, the density is 28 units per acre. Right now, we have a minimum, the C2 zone references with a requirement that was added in 1980 about the conversion of existing floor space to a federal publication from 1973. And at the end of the day, it says that the minimum unit size is 500 square feet, depending on the number of bedrooms. It's really kind of obsolete in current, in current zoning language. So it's really just updating that. 100% affordable housing. This is where I'm focusing on HomeCor. I reached out to HomeCor. I asked them to tell me what they want to do with their properties. And they, I heard back from them on Friday. So I spent the weekend evaluating their request. And what they asked for. Let me see, on Miller Street. They own, they own four properties on Miller Street. One is a vacant lot. One property is a two-family house. And then on the east side of Miller Street, they own some multifamily buildings. They're very historic. This is a historic district. It's in the R2 zone, which we kind of talked about in previously with the, this, it's in the middle of that area where I want to create that new R2 zone. And they, HomeCor requests that the zoning ordinance for the Miller Street area be amended to allow three-family houses, that accessory dwelling units be permitted when they're not, when they're not, when the property is not owner occupied. And they want to allow the development of accessory structures in the rear yards with additional dwelling units. So if you take a look at the lots, I think the lots on the east side are truly pretty deep. I know Carmel, have you actually been back behind those properties? That's where they have the community gardens. I think it's worth taking the time to do a site visit to see if it's possible to put some accessory dwelling units back there, one-story buildings in the back. My suggestion would be to, and I have not taken a look at that myself. The smaller lots, no, but the bigger lots to take a look. And if we feel that maybe you can put some more buildings in the back, like an ADU, again, do a overlay zone for that and say that it has to be 100% affordable. You know, if we're, if we're going to allow you to build new units, it has to be 100% affordable. But I don't feel comfortable making a recommendation to, I actually go out and see the site. And if anybody from the planning board or the council wants to come with me, I'll try and make an appointment with HomeCor to do an assessment.
You know, they're coming to the EDC on April 17th.
What did you just say?
They're coming to the EDC on April 17th.
HomeCor is?
Shirley Grill.
Well, I think before then, I'm going to have to have this plan finished, so I'm going to have to reach out with them before that meeting.
Yeah.
Mayor.
Put your hand up. Oh, okay. Yes, I just, I'm a little concerned that the very quaint and historic Miller Street neighborhood is now being considered for some other things. And again, in my mind, that just helps me to understand how I think we're really still, you know, at a time where we think it's okay to change the character of certain neighborhoods and not touch other neighborhoods. Because we have these ideas of deep, large backyard, so they must be developed in the most dense, densely populated neighborhood in the fourth ward. And yet and still, we haven't gotten to the part of your presentation, yet we're going to take those huge, very deep backyards in Ward RO along South Mountain and other streets and put anything there. Any concerns me? And I just, I really have a concern that we would do that in a historic neighborhood and not, not even think twice about the character of the neighborhood, what we're doing. And there's no parking there. The street is very narrow, so you can't have on-street parking because we've looked at all these type of things. And I just think that that's a very bad plan. And the other question I have is, does HomeCor owe them? Where are we with HomeCor even actually owing free and clear these properties? Are they now, you know, in a, in a position that the township might acquire them or Essex, someone might come through and acquire them? Because I just don't understand how we're now planning extra things when, to the best of my knowledge, there's some concerns.
I'm just, you know, we've been talking about this for a long time. I asked HomeCor what their request was, and which they gave to me on Friday. I haven't had a chance to even look at the, you know, I can look at an aerial, but I really want to walk the properties and see. I'm just, I'm, I'm, I know, I know exactly what you're saying.
Taxes. Let's start by looking at the taxes.
I know. We, we've had this discussion. I know they're in arrears for close to $180,000, $190,000. They owe us unpaid taxes.
So before we start developing and changing a plan here for something that, why don't we just, you know, make sure everybody's up to date with their, what they already owe the township?
What they've said that they want to do is change, this is, they have to, what they've said to me and I think what they've said in. in, in conversations with the council is they want to change, make their strategy more sustainable by having some market-rate housing and affordable housing. Which is why I said, and, and we've tried to work out with an acquisition or a partial acquisition program. They seem to be very unwilling or to do that. So I asked them, what do you need to make this work? And this was the response. So I think it's at least fair to evaluate what's reasonable and what's not reasonable. At the end of the day, if it's not reasonable, that's what we say, we say no.
I'm trying to understand, Janice, I was listening and trying to figure out, because I know Miller Street somewhat, how you're going to add more housing there in place of the garden. And it sounds a little bit complicated and not an improvement, really. It sounds like it's just congestion.
Well, I think, let me pull up, let me pull up the aerial.
Mr. Chair. While she's pulling this up, I'm just curious why this conversation wouldn't be appropriate for a committee?
Because I have to have the housing plan, the public hearings in the month.
Yeah, we've known that this has been a topic, a coming topic for some time. Right, so it's not to rush you. There's clearly a lot of thought and intention that's being put into the plan that you're reviewing.
They gave this to me on Friday. Let me tell you, they gave this to me on Friday. I spent my weekend evaluating it.
Yeah.
And I'm here tonight trying to at least
that, that is.
give HomeCorps the benefit of consideration.
This perhaps affirmation for the question. It's clear, if you're, why are you doing it by yourself?
And that, and so that's why I, I think, can we move, do a site visit over the next week or two to see what's, is this a yes or a no? If it's a no, then we take it out of the plan.
Sorry, clarifying. My question's not specific to Miller Street, more the, the plan, that this conversation at the aggregate, the discussion, the last hour.
And, you know, Tamara, you were not at the last meeting. We spent a good portion of the last meeting talking about the background for this and some of these ideas. I'm fleshing them out a little, and this might be the first that you've heard of them.
No, I was, I was on virtual, but it's not about me. It's more about this board. Why is this not appropriate for a committee? So it's not directed to you.
Because the, and also the planning board said they didn't want this in committee. You wanted, you felt that the full?
Okay, if that's the answer, then.
The full, this is what I was told.
And I think it's a matter of timing. You know, and I think the, the issues are so important, as you're hearing here, and there's a lot of, a lot of strong opinions across this board that it didn't make sense to put this in a subcommittee because I think we'd end up doing the same exact thing we're doing here. So we're spending more time at the board level to try and address some of these questions. Okay.
Well, I don't think it deals with it. And ultimately is a part of the master plan, but right now, this is, this is, you know, this, this right now, this, this land that's owned by various people that they're trying to change into affordable housing. So the master plan generically talks about, but it doesn't talk about these neighborhoods doing these things, no. This is, this is private, private property, actually, that people, church property, HomeCorps property. And they're sort of coming up with ideas as how to use it. And the question is, do we agree?
Do you see this? Would you want to turn the lights off so you can see it a little bit better?
Oh, but then they can't see it on television. I was told you can't turn the lights off because they can't see it on the.
All right, well, you can see.
We can see it, yeah, yeah.
This is what I've. Yeah, normally I'd be a little bit better prepared, but I, like I said, I spent a lot of time this weekend evaluating this. Why am I not? There we go. This is the Miller Street Village, the Miller Street, if you're familiar with, it's a, this is the larger property that's owned by HomeCorps. I think it's six units here. I have it in my notes, but there's, there's, the, the, the units are in this building here and these three houses here. They're in two separate lots. Parking is in the rear. I don't know why this is not working. There we go. Parking's in the rear. I really haven't had a chance to see what's back there. I think there's a community garden, but it's very nice. I don't know if this is, if this is, if there is any ability to provide a accessory dwelling unit back here. Now normally, it's a one-story structure. These are, you know, they're designed, they, they kind of fit the pattern in the area. Normally, it's, if it's a two-family house, you would allow an accessory structure. So I don't know until I've seen that if there's the opportunity to put one or more accessory structures. Remember, those are like 800 square feet, square foot dwelling units. They're pretty small. In this case, you have three houses that have been consolidated on one lot. I'm not sure how the parking lays out at this point. So I don't even know if this is feasible. But it's something I think, they asked for it, maybe it bears a little bit of additional evaluation. Again, just trying to help HomeCorps make this work. And in which case, it would be an overlay zone, an affordable housing overlay zone. You can, we can write into that zone what we want to see there.
Just on that site, or?
Yeah, absolutely. You can do it, affordable, an overlay zone for affordable housing. We could just do this site. This is their vacant lot. As you can see, they want to put a two, I know they want to put a two-family house there. It's used for parking. This is the other lot that they own, which is very deep. There might be an opportunity to put a, an ADU in the back. I don't know. This is our property, right here, 14 Miller. We own this property and this is the back of it. So perhaps we could come up with some option with, with HomeCorps. If what's, the property that we own at 14 Miller, if part of that in the back is used for parking, if they really want to build a, a two-family house. And the question I have is what happens to the parking that currently exists on this property right now? So these are the conversations we need to have with HomeCorps, with these specifics for their Miller Street property. This is the one histor, it's a very historic house. It's 1727 Miller Street. The other property, I think, yeah. These are the three houses that are on the other property that they own on Miller Street. They also have a request for the properties that they own on William Street, which I've shown here. This is also in the R2 zone. One has, I think they both have six dwelling units. This has six dwelling units at 20, at 33 William Street, and this property at 25 also has six dwelling units. You can see they're connected. There's parking here. And there's parking here. Their request, and this is the picture of the building that's at the corner of Washington and, what is it?
Wood.
It's, that's not Talbot Street. That's.
No, top, next one.
It's Williams, Williams. Day, day, that's right. And this is the other property that they own on, on William Street. So what they're asking for is to build another building on William Street. I'm pretty sure that what they want.
Sorry, what did you say, Janice? They want to build another building on William Street?
Yeah, yeah. So perhaps where, where they have the parking lot here, they can build another building and work out a parking range because there is some room back here for them to provide parking. I haven't seen how it gets laid out. But again, if they, we so decide to do that, that would be another opportunity for a specific overlay zone. And any units that would be, would be created would be 100% affordable. If the, I would rec, at least if the township wanted to do that, I would recommend that they make it 100% affordable. So that is the, the key provisions that HomeCorps is asking. They asked for a couple of other items. You know, expediting, and I, I don't know if we want to keep this in the plan or not, but they want to expedite approval of 100% affordable housing, eliminate density limits for 100% affordable housing. I don't agree with everything that they asked. I just put it in here for a placeholder for, for discussion. Anyway, and I don't think we need to go through all of these right now, but that's the direction that they're going in. And I don't know, I know how, Mayor, how you feel about HomeCorps. I don't know how the rest of the board feels or if you want to.
It's not, it's not about HomeCorps. It's about being in violation of all the discussions that we've had over the past few years about not continuing to put further density in the most densely populated area, not continuing to over-populate with all of the affordable units in the fourth ward. And it seems like now, all of a sudden, we, we breezed over a couple of things. We didn't really get down to the details in the same manner that now the HomeCorps, we're going to, they want this, they want very detailed. And I am totally opposed to that. Yes, I'm opposed to the fact that nothing in here has been in the detail. This development in the fourth ward where there's no parking, where, you know, I see you pointing to things, finding parking, there's no parking on that street. Right now, we're trying to work with the neighbors to figure that out and to continue to put density there. Also, the environmental factor, taking away a garden that is providing sustenance for a neighborhood in a food desert, where people constantly call us at the council level, talking about, we have no food, we're living in a food desert. Now we're going to remove that very garden that has been providing very successfully for the residents there. We have a tree grant where we could put trees behind the lovely historic buildings to improve the environment there because of the proximity of the neighbors, one on top of each other, and the density and the carbon footprint in that level. Yet, we are considering to add more density. That, and it has nothing to do with whether it's HomeCorps or any other thing. I think the problem is that we have wonderful relationships. I certainly have supported HomeCorps many decades. You know that. So this is not about HomeCorps. I love what they've been able to do in and with the township. But at this point in time, this is not in alignment with the things that we've talked about. Yet, we're giving this more attention than anything else that you talked about tonight.
I think part of that is just by virtue of the fact that HomeCorps, as the property owner and affordable housing provider, was able to advocate for itself in perhaps ways that other organization, like, there's no organization that owns property in the RO zone that operates affordable housing that could send a report saying, this is the change we want to make. And so I think we're going to have to provide more of that energy if those are the types of changes we want to see. That's something we're going to have to kind of encourage Janice and, and her department with bringing those types of ideas to us. Because we won't have the luxury of HomeCorps sending us a, a list, right? Because while, I understand you're frustrated by their, their desire for further density and, and intensity of uses on the property they own. It is the property they own. And so it's what they have to work with to some extent.
Oh, that's questionable whether they own it or not, but yes.
Whether it has.
I receive where you're going.
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah. And so I, I think, you know, if, if they had owned a property in another part of town, I'm sure they would have had similar requests for that. And it seems they just don't have that. And so they think that just means Janice and your department are going to have to be more of the, the driver on those sorts of recommendations, which we look forward to.
Right. I mean, my concern is we have six, they have 62 units. Those units are at risk. We've been trying to, I've been trying to work with them for years to try and make sure that they're sustainable. And this is just part of the conversation. So part of the conversation says, well, what do you need, is what I ask them.
How much have we invested already?
Over a million dollars.
Over how much?
Over a million dollars. That includes the purchase of 14 Miller Street. We did get 14 Miller Street from them. But in terms of all the grants that we've given them for the other properties, it's been close to a million. So.
I guess I have sympathy for HomeCorps. You know, it's been around for what, almost 35, over 35 years? It had a great management in the beginning. It did really well. Then it had management problems with their executive director. Then it had, I mean, COVID hurt them hard. They had people were not paying the rents. Most of their income comes from people who pay rents. Now they're trying to get on more firmer financial footing by trying to monetize some of the property that they have so that they can pay our $180,000 tax bill and perhaps other monies they owe to the county as well. It's a really difficult situation. And I feel like they contribute to our housing count by the units that they provide. I, I, you know, I can see both sides of the story. And I, believe me, the density issue is tough. It's a tough one. And especially here we are at this meeting, supposedly discussing climate change issues and open space. And yet we're advocating, not, we're not advocating, but we have to look at proposals where they are building on open space. Wildwood Avenue, New Street should be redoing that. We have problems with stormwater runoff. So it's, it's really something to grapple with. But with respect to HomeCorps, they're in a financial bind. How do we help them get out of that? Do we, I mean, I think the issue has come, should they sell to somebody else?
There, there is an offer.
Yeah, I, yeah, yeah. I know.
Oh, I'm just saying.
Yeah.
There's, there's quite a few things, right? And, and I receive what you're saying.
Yeah, it's just, I'm trying to be sympathetic, you know, I'm trying to be sympathetic to them because they've done good in this town. They provided housing for 35 years to people. They provide commercial space at discounted rates, I guess. Affordable, you know, commercial space on Glen Ridge Avenue, as we saw the Paradiso, Dominican restaurant. So I don't know what to say, but it's, it's certainly, it's not an easy situation for them and not an easy situation for us either.
No, it's not, yeah.
So just to summarize, and I did make other recommendations in this dra, in, in my current draft of the plan in terms of the R1 zone and the RO and the ROZ, ROA zone. One of the things I did is I looked at where are, I call them, oh God, what do I, they are, it's not supportive and special needs housing, but it's, I had a title, dwelling units that, alternative living, I call it alternative living dwelling units. It includes residential healthcare facilities. It includes boarding homes. It includes homes for people with special needs, all of which, or the majority of which are licensed by the state. Majority of which are permitted uses in our residential districts. So I have a list of, you know, what are the addresses of all these? And they are scattered between the R1 and some of, and R2 and R3. They're scattered throughout our zone districts. And you wouldn't even know that they're there because for the most part, they look like single-family homes. So the reason I did that, and a lot of these are, some of them are senior housing, you know, it's a lot of seniors that live in them. And it may be seniors with some services, maybe seniors with no services, like the Montclair Inn, which is congregate living for seniors. So the suggestion is, shouldn't the residential zone districts permit assisted living and congregate living and supportive housing as a permitted use? As long as it's in, within a single-family house and it looks like a single-family house and it functions like a single-family house. And it's actually already happening. But to permit that in our residential zone districts, I think would be appropriate because we already have that. It's pretty, you know, there's, if you look, and it's kind of hard to see in the map because the lots are really small. But I do have a list of, of all the addresses and the zone districts, and it's pretty much scattered throughout the township. So that is one of my recommendations for the residential zones, to make those permitted uses. Congregate living, senior, senior living, the cohousing option where they can live together as one housing unit. So in summary, when I did the math, I looked at, you know, what do we anticipate to happen in this 10-year plan? You know, if redevelopment occurs on those properties that I identified that are, are underutilized, we can get 104 affordable units over the next 10 years under the existing zoning. Township-owned land, if that's developed for 100% affordable housing, we can get 16 units. Faith-based housing, maybe we can get 10 units at that convent, maybe six. I'm not quite sure exactly. Oh, I didn't mention, I also propose an overlay zone for supportive housing for the Crawford Cruz property on Bloomfield Avenue. The VA, they, they are trying to get their project going. They've gotten permission from the Historic Preservation Commission to demolish their existing building. And they want to build a new building with the Veterans Hall on the first floor and then eight units, I believe it is, of affordable housing for veterans above that. And they gave me their, if they built it, what the, what, what it would look like, what their setbacks are, were required. And it would not meet the requirements of the C1 zone. Essentially, these would be very small units. The density is probably closer to 100 units per acre at the end of the day. The density is probably closer to 100 units per acre at the end of the day for their, their six or eight units. So, my suggestion would be to create an overlay, another affordable housing overlay zone just for that property, recognizing that it's really to create 100% affordable housing for the veterans on that lot. And they would still have to come for site plan approval before the planning board, but at least it would be a permitted use and we would have the appropriate zoning controls and allow them to move forward. So, oh, I didn't mention extension of affordability controls. We have 40 units, mostly home, they're HomeCorps units, all of them, I believe, whose affordability controls expire over the next 10 years. So, if we can extend the affordability controls on those units, right now, we allow 15, a payment of $15,000 per unit just to extend the affordability controls. We could get credit for another 40 units through that program. And if you wanted to try and do an accessory dwelling unit program for an affordable housing ADU program. The state has been saying for the past year and a half that they're gonna provide money for a pilot program. I think it would be a wonderful opportunity for us to participate. So, it'd be nice if we anticipate creating five affordable units through an ADU program like that. And at the end, if all of these things take place, we can get 200, over 200 affordable units over this 10-year period. So, that's kind of what-
Just a question.
The summary of what's in the draft plan. Go ahead.
You mentioned the extension of affordability, that they could potentially get $15,000 for fixing that.
We had, that's our existing program.
When is the last time that amount of money went up? It seems very low to rehabilitate a unit.
It's not to rehabilitate, it's just to extend the controls, but it was-
I thought it was used to upgrade the apartments, let's just say.
Right, but it's, we, it was, it was not, it was different from a rehabilitation program. You know, we gave them the $15,000. They had to spend it to rehabilitate it. But it was really just like an incentive for them to put in the new restrictions. It's not like our housing rehab program where you have to have the building inspector out there identifying the code non-compliant, non-compliances, so.
I understand. I'm just saying that the amount of money is very low.
Right.
And it hasn't changed, I imagine, in years.
In 10 years, yeah.
Yeah, so maybe you might want to think about upping that amount.
We can do that, yeah. And that'll be part of the spending plan, which the council is in control of.
With the ADUs, how much of that regulation is locally determined? And how much of it comes from the state? For example, I know that we recently talked about expanding the size of the freestanding ADUs that would be created for, on lots that had backyard space, for example. And I was wondering, I know that with regard to ADUs that are a part of an existing house, I think there was something about that the ADU could only be 40% of a certain whatever. And I was wondering, is that something that the state dictated? Or is that something that we dictate?
We dictate.
We did it.
And where did we get our figures from?
We, many years of analysis. You know, we capped it at 800 square feet. So, that's the largest, you may have heard of larger ADUs, but anything larger than that has to get approval from the zoning board of adjustment. So, it's 800 square feet. It could be in a detached unit. It can be attached or within the house. But that's the maximum size.
And there was a regulation, I think, with those that are in the house that say you had a two-family house or whatever. I'm making it a two-family house because it says that it couldn't be larger. The ADU couldn't be larger than the main, 40% of the main apartment, which-
That's true.
I was wondering where that restriction came from.
It came from an evaluation of other ordinances. And the idea is that the accessory dwelling unit is accessory to the primary dwelling unit. And that's why the size of the accessory dwelling unit is smaller than the size of-
I understand that, but it came up with the exact figure of 40%. And I was wondering why that was being-
That's probably because that's what's in Princeton's ordinance.
Well, also, I think we use the AARP model ordinance for ADUs. So, that was compared with Princeton and Maplewood or the-
We looked at all of them.
Yeah, yeah. We spent about six months working on this.
And I can't tell you which one it came from. But it maybe it makes sense to, if it's a two-family house, maybe it makes sense to, because you still can't exceed 800 square feet.
Right.
But if the, if you can, rather than using the, maybe we can make another adjustment. Rather than using the largest unit in a two-family house, say, we cannot be more than 40% of the entire volume of the structure.
That would make more sense. But I was looking at all of that because I'm very familiar with all of those.
Yeah, we didn't, we, that might be something we can adjust.
Something else we might think about adjusting on the ADUs is someone raised the question that they wanted to have a, I think it was 36 by 20 feet. Whatever it was, it comes under 800 feet. But it's more than that, we just passed that 30 by 20. And, you know, it's something, they'd have to get a variance.
Right.
I mean, why do we, why can't we just say as long as it's under 800 feet or 800 feet and under, it could be any configuration it wants?
Okay.
I mean, that's, that's a-
That was, yeah, that kind of thing.
I also think something we should incorporate and where in this plan, that would be, who knows? But basically, set three, maybe five off-the-shelf ADU plans that are basically pre-approved for anywhere in town. If you've got the square footage for them, you can put them down. So, that way, we, you want to make it easy, right? And so, a homeowner doesn't necessarily want to go to an architect and get specific plans, but we can make them available. They'd comply with state law, they'd comply with our ordinances right off the bat. And if we can incorporate that, it makes it that much easier for folks to build.
I love that idea that you just mentioned in term of the ADU. And I particularly like it because I'm still sitting over here. I'm hoping that when we discuss, you know, the language, that we're gonna have something, some strong language in there, that we're committed not to having race and class-based zoning. And to that point, rather than take and allow for increased density in a historic neighborhood, a little quaint street with really, you know, narrow street, add more ADUs. If we have an ADU plan in place, then our neighbors up on Mountain Ave, South Mountain, wherever they have large properties, can put two or three affordable units in the back there and not have to go through a certain plan. And then, I will feel much more comfortable that we're not still perpetrating race and class-driven zoning. Because I, again, don't understand why it's okay to change the character of the neighborhood. And I get the whole thing about, "We don't want to change the character of the neighborhood." So, I'd like to preface that. But if we're not going to change the character of a neighborhood, don't do it in the 4th Ward just to meet a quota of some affordable units. You understand what I'm saying? I get that whole thing because I got so many people when I mentioned, when we had- no, we want to preserve the character of the, I am very much in favor of affording, you know, maintaining the character of a neighborhood. But then, we shouldn't be in the 4th Ward going to the very cramped neighborhood and then feeling fine about throwing some ADUs there and not going to those very, very large units where nobody would even see the affordable units behind the driveways to get to the back of some of those properties.
Okay. Well, I will work on the plan and have another conversation with HomeCorps. And we'll see where it goes. If anybody wants to come with me and evaluate that, I got, okay.
I want to go off.
Okay, so Pierre and Jake and Mayor Vasquez and-
We'll go, I think. You can't be more than three, right?
But there's only, there's only two of you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, I've got one, two, three, four.
I think you're okay. For a site visit, four will be okay.
Four, four's, well, I mean, four's okay. Quorum's five.
Yeah, quorum's five.
So, we can, quorum is five.
Five. Oh, I see.
No, yeah, we got nine.
So, I believe we're okay with four.
So, I think that would be very beneficial. Okay, I mean, I know it's last minute, you know, but we have these timelines and-
You want to go?
I'll take a pace time apparently. And we still count. I'll just like be behind the bushes.
You know, if you guys want to come, I think that's fine.
As long as we don't make decisions.
No, 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 no.
I can even, I can even publish it as a meeting.
I was like, if you notice it, I'm fine with everybody going.
I will notice it. If everybody wants to do it, I can notice it as a meeting.
I mean, whether, whether or not decisions are made, that's not, the sunshine law says you can't even show up together. Because decisions could be made without noticing it to the public.
Fair, fair.
Right? And while I would trust this board to not make decisions, it still looks bad.
Oh, we can trust this board not to make decisions?
We can't, we'll take like five minutes and then five minutes.
Yeah, you can.
I just want to go back there with Janice and some of the others. And then leave and then somebody else.
If people are not there at the same time, I think that's fine. But I look to Mr. Niece to see if I'm splitting a hair too much.
What I will do is I will reach out to Sherri. She's the director, and Shirley.
Oh, that's right.
And maybe we can have more than, you know, two meetings. And they should be there too. So, you have the opportunity to listen to-
Well, you can't go without them, right?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. It's their property. So, I'll make this happen, okay? And maybe, it'd probably be a lot easier for me if we keep it in two separate groups so I don't have to notice it because it's always a little bit of a pain. All right? And we'll have the discussion at the public hearing on how you want to handle it.
Great. Thank you, Jan.
And so-
Or we can take it out. So, the next meeting-
We're not even there. We're not even down to that section of the agenda yet, Mayor.
We have one more meeting before the public hearing, right?
We have a meeting on the 21st with applications that night.
But we're not going to get to discuss this and look at the document before the public hearing. I really don't want to be discussing this in public.
I can get the document to you this week.
Yes, thank you.
That would be helpful because it was a lot of details.
Where it is right now, you know, basically, I'll get it to you this week without the, you know, it's not going to include the zoning details, but it's going to take what I talked about tonight.
Right, that'd be great. Thank you. That'll be, that'll be perfect. Thank you, Jan.
And I appreciate the amount of work that you put into it.
Yes, yep.
It's hard to absorb all of those details.
There's a lot of pieces to the puzzle. For a town that has really no obligation, I think housing's a real issue. And I think there's a lot of interest. And, you know, the housing survey has been very, very, we've got a lot of results. So, there's a lot of interest. And I just think we want to do the right thing.
Right. Yes.
I've got a very small question going back to, we were talking about the faith-based property.
Right.
And we were talking about parsonages. And I'm just curious how a faith-based overlay would connect with how you do the faith-based ownership overlays? Because it is in some sense tied to the ownership of the property. And so, is-
I would just do it for, when I say overlay zone, I was just going to do that for the, what I called the convent.
Okay.
That's site-specific. I know that there's a vacant building there that they're interested. So, basically, create the option. It's not going to negate the underlying.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I'm more wondering in a broader conversation around religious land going to affordable housing, I guess, just how that ties into ownership and zoning. It's more a thing I'm going to think about. We'll move on.
So, if we get this plan this week, I would say if folks have questions for, questions on the plan, get them to Ms. Tally. Don't send them to the whole board. Send them to Ms. Tally. If there are revisions or anything like that that you feel is appropriate, send it back. And we'll kind of, we'll try and handle as much as we can, you know, without meeting, without emailing, reply all, which we can't do. It'd be a violation of the Open Publics Meeting Act.
I can put this on the agenda for the next meeting just so that it's a discussion item. If anybody has, the next meeting is-
And I think if there's key items as part of that.
April 21st.
Right, the next meeting is in two weeks, April 21st. If there's key items, right? So, if you get a lot of feedback, maybe some of it, everybody's on the same page, or at least we think, then maybe we don't talk about that. But where there are disconnects.
Right.
Differing opinions of the board, that's where we should spend some time on the 21st, discussing prior to the public hearing, if we can.
And I'll try and keep the agenda as late as I can on the 21st.
Thank you.
So, should we be providing opinions when we're looking at this? Or just questioning?
You can provide feedback to Ms. Tally.
We should be providing feedback. Provide feedback to me. And then, at the meeting, certainly, you give your opinion.
Right, that doesn't change any opinions that somebody might have at the meeting.
Yeah, be persuasive or whatever.
Correct, correct. And I think we're going to have differing points of view from what I can tell so far. And that's, and that's fine. And again, this, yes, we have to have this housing element done at times certain. Doesn't mean we can't revise it three months from now as well, right? So, it's not, this isn't set in stone.
You have a lot more flexibility than most towns.
Right.
In a good position. Most towns, they have to submit their plan. It's going to be part of a settlement agreement or whatever. A declaratory action, I think, is what they're calling. It has to go to a dispute resolution. So, there's, I don't anticipate a lot of disputes or any litigation on our housing plan.
Well, thank you for getting us to that position. We're very in that position. Thank you.
So, okay. I don't know if you're ready for a discussion on the climate change-related hazard vulnerability assessment. But I do have-
It's 10 after 9:00. What do folks?
I do have copies of the report from the Environmental Commission, which came in after the packet went out.
Can I ask a question? Is there any particular timeframe for having comments on this? I'm most, I'm almost inclined to say, can we defer it to the next meeting? I don't know what everybody else thinks.
Second.
Yeah, you can. It was, you know, a lot of 54 pages, so.
You mean that they-
I did read it, the whatever it's-
I think there's no timeframe for this.
Okay.
I got the, I got the responses from the, and I had a free meeting tonight. The application was pulled. So, it's to make you aware that this is what the Environmental Commission, they have some very good recommendations.
Okay. I mean, it's just a matter of cost. I mean, a lot of the recommendations, like do this, do that, and the other. Well, my God, if we did all that stuff, you know, it's very costly.
Yeah.
That's, and we're in this budget, I mean, the town is in pretty dire financial straits, if you ask me.
I think this is part of a longer-range plan.
Yeah.
And I completely agree with them that we need to evaluate our steep slopes ordinance. We probably need to look at, you know, how to reduce risk of wildfire and damage from wildfire. There's some really good suggestions.
Yeah, but tearing up parking lots to put in basins and stuff, I mean, that's costly.
And hopefully, all along.
So, that's a long concern to bear.
Well, Barbara Woolley Dillon from DEP said, "Once you have your resiliency plan, then you'll be eligible for grants."
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, no. And this is what we're working towards, which I think is- and then, the sooner you have it in, the, you're up on the queue, which is-
Exactly.
Which is good, yeah.
Right.
Right.
Anyway, so next meeting.
We can, we can table, you know, the in-depth discussion of that for a future meeting when we're not under the gun for something else.
Are you okay with that, Keith? Because I know this is your committee.
Given that it just came out, I mean, this, the recommendations from the MEC were just decided on Wednesday night. decided on Wednesday night. So, I think it, I think it's appropriate to let this body have some time with it.
Thank you.
And I'll just say, you know, my comments got circulated as well. My comments were more, I think, directed to Nick Dickerson, yeah, Mr. Dickerson.
Right.
And just as he was putting together his plan, like, it seemed like there were some holes, or I just didn't understand where the data came from, and also for clarity. So, my comments weren't necessarily for this body, more for Mr. Dickerson, but to the extent he doesn't...
And I agree with your comments.
And to the extent he doesn't address them, then yes, this body should pick it up.
So, that's my question. Has he answered those questions for you?
I don't know. I haven't heard.
Not yet, no.
I understand he's still, he's doing kind of a final revision of his document, which then will come to the township, come to us, and then it's our responsibility to take that